...for Wednesday's, or excuse me, Thursday, February 24th. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and if you would like to join us for the Lord's Prayer for the invocation. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us those who trespass against us. Lead us by patience, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever.
Aw, man. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the regular session from December 6th of 2021. And if anyone has a motion to proceed with that.
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as presented. Executive.
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribel?
Aye.
Commissioner Schreiber?
Aye.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
If she passes. Okay, thank you. All right, and the next item on our agenda, I'm very excited and very thankful that you guys are joining us today. We have a special presentation from Jim Carroll, the Executive Director of the Hampton Roads Small Business Development Center. And I would like to invite you up for that presentation. I appreciate you joining us tonight.
I'll give him a brief introduction.
Sure.
I'll give him a brief introduction. I gave his computer ready and everything.
Sure.
So Jim Carroll has worked closely with all of the localities in the region. He is a good friend to all. He is our go-to person. We have a question about small businesses, or one of our businesses needs some help. He's had us in with Mark Wilson who's come and spoken to our businesses before. And we're very happy to have him. Just briefly, so you know a little about him. He was born and raised in Pennsylvania, graduated from Villanova University, was in the Navy and retired from the Navy after 21 years. So he's had this double career as a commission officer. He has many master's degrees from, it sounds like naval types of things, in addition to an MBA from London. I don't really realize you'd spent time over there unless it was a different course where you didn't have to stay over there the whole time. In 1997, he served as the Executive Director for the Hampton Roads Small Business Development Center and Vice President for Small Business for the Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce. So that career was another 20-plus years. He's had a double career. He's helped over 10,000 clients, helping business owners generate over $350 million in economic impact and creating and saving over 8,000 jobs. And so he's our go-to person, and we appreciate him always showing up and helping us out.
Charity, thank you very much. And that was London, Ohio, not London. No, no, it was, it was, it was London, UK. I was seconded to the Royal Navy for three years. So, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the Commission, thank you very much for having me tonight. Hopefully, I'll be able to give you some information that'll help you with your decision-making as you move forward. Just like everything else, we have to have the paid advertisement before we get into the show. And in this case, the SBDC is part of a nationwide and statewide network. In the state, we're under George Mason University. Jody Keenan is my director. Our funding comes from two sources. First, we've received money from the federal government through the SBA. The Small Business Administration gives the Commonwealth of Virginia about $2 million a year to operate centers like mine throughout the Commonwealth. We have 27 of them. We, in order to qualify for that money, have to raise money locally from municipalities, chambers of commerce, financial institutions, whatever. The city of Pecosin, through Dave and Charity's generosity in supporting me, has been one of my funding support, funding partners since the beginning. And I thank you very much for that. Now, you're going to get some facts, you're going to get some opinions, and I will qualify that. But I do remember, the opinions expressed by the speaker do not reflect the federal government, the state government, George Mason University, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Now, one thing, I do want to add a caveat. There are some projections in here, and very seriously, they have all been thrown into a cocked hat. I would not rely on these. When I did this presentation and the research, the projections were valid. Inflation, COVID variants, and at 4:00 AM today with our dear friend Vladimir Vladimirovich wanting to get some summer property down in the Crimea, well, it's all gone to rats. And we don't know what kind of impact that's going to have. And, you know, how's that going to affect inflation? How's that going to affect supply chains? There's just way too many questions right now. Anybody who said, "I can tell you the future," they're, they're not telling the truth. So, how important is small business to this region? Hampton Roads is interesting because we do have four congressional districts cover the Hampton Roads area. And that includes my area, which, the 18 cities and counties that we serve. It also expands beyond those 18 cities and counties. But the SBA Office of Advocacy did a study, and they found that, on these four districts, 93% of the employers were small businesses. They hired some 50,000 workers and paid them, and, I'm sorry, 50,000 businesses, 514,000 employees, and a budget of $20 billion. So everybody talks about small businesses, mom and pop. Well, that's a pretty big mom and pop operation when you get down to it. But more important than the impact that you see here is the fact that small business owners are the ones who are out there on a daily basis risking, in some cases, everything. If you get a loan from a bank, you're probably going to have to put your house up as collateral. No pressure now, folks. You know, it's, it's very, very tough. And, you know, so they're out there taking these risks to deliver the goods and services that this region needs for both supporting their three main pillars, which is tourism, the port, and the military, but also for the quality of life that we enjoy. And we had, we had dinner down at the Surf's Up Restaurant before coming here today. That's a small business. And it was a killer meal. I'm bringing my wife back here the next time we come over here. But it's important to keep that in mind, that small businesses are very, very key to this region's economy. I went through about three or four databases, Vertical IQ, IBIS World, ESRI, and I can't remember the fourth one right now, in doing the research on Pecosin and the numbers. I'm pretty confident that the numbers that they're reporting historically are very, very accurate. But you can see, the population, 12,190, was an increase of about 2/10 of a percent, but the population's been growing, almost 2% since 2016. Job growth nationally, job growth in Pecosin, 7.2%. Nationally, 5.8. Home prices increased 4.2, but closely to 4.9 at the national level. And unemployment, and this is a big one, 2% versus 4.2%. So, yeah, these are very, very good statistics that reflect the economic vitality of this Where's the, where are these people being employed? Here's a breakdown of the various industries, where they are, and the percentages. I take a look at the government, 29%, that's a third of your population. We could not get a breakdown between federal, state, and local government, but it's still government tax dollars nonetheless, and something to keep in mind. So, in 2019, these were the top 10 startups for the city of Pecosin. We just have the industries, we don't have the numbers. You could probably drill down through the Commissioner of the Revenue's Office on business licenses to get a more detailed breakdown of the data that's here. But it covers the whole spectrum. You know, it's not heavily weighted in one area or another. You know, real estates, all kinds of restaurants, doctors' offices, real estate credit remodelers, commercial bankers, lessers, and computer services, and home health care. Home health care, we're seeing across the board, is now one of the larger employers. And it's going to get even more so as people like me get into retirement. So, we don't have anything for 2020 yet. On housing, this is interesting. 81% of the homes in Pecosin are occupied. And rentals are 19%. What does that tell us? Well, you have a stable, less transitory population, which is very, very good, especially for small business owners, because they can start to develop relationships with their customers, and they're going to be around for a while. Here's where we get into the forecasts, you know, '22, '15, and '11. Please remember the caveat, those are very, very suspect right now, just given the world's situation as it stands today. ESRI does a great job at taking a look at the Pecosin, or the shoppers and the shopping habits. And it's interesting, ESRI calls the majority of the households in Pecosin as savvy suburbanites. Bet you never thought you'd get that designation. Well-educated, well-capitalized, and most importantly, well-informed shoppers. And, you know, with their trends, family-oriented vehicles, minivans, station wagons, SUVs. They like to cook and prefer natural and organic foods. And this is the big one, and this is, they make liberal use of technology for their shopping, their banking, and their communications. And this is something I think you have to be aware of, is that we are seeing seismic shifts in the way business practices are being conducted, and it is all being driven by technology. As horrific as COVID was, it really gave us 10 years of advances in communications, and internet, and internet shopping, and everything else in just three years. We advanced 10. So that's something to remember, that this is going to continue. This has now become a way of life. You know, everybody has their little cellphone, and I can tell you, you have more computing power in your hand than they had on the Apollo moonshot. I mean, it is absolutely astounding, just what people have at their fingertips these days. And that's going to, and we're at the SBA, at the state level, this is one of the issues we're addressing, because this is going to have an impact on small businesses. You know, how do they conduct their business anymore? How do they market themselves? You know, we're going to have to figure out where the customers are now. You know, back in the old days, it was Yellow Pages, an ad in the newspaper, and maybe an ad on the radio. Well, dinosaur, dinosaur, dinosaur. They're gone. And now you have to figure out how you reach them, and you reach them electronically. And so you have to find the right channels to get your message out, and you have to find the right message as you go forward with it. The Hampton Roads Alliance took a look at population growth and retail demand, and they see that, once again, projections, they're expecting it to grow much faster from 2020 to 2025. That all depends on inflation, supply chain issues, and the like. And on the inflation side of the house, I was, we were talking earlier, and it cost me $60 to fill up my gas tank. It cost me $60 to fill up my gas tank, okay? That gets my attention very, very quickly. And, you know, so something is going to have to give there, and we just don't know what's going, what it's going to be. The demographic trends. Interesting to note that your population over 18 is 10,277, and, you know, of an overall population of 12,738. So you have an older population. Okay, there are good and there are bads with it. The good side is, is that they have disposable income, they have needs that are relatively easy to make, easy to serve. The bad news is, is that when they die, what happens? You know, this is, you, we have to take a look at, okay, how do we entice, how do we entice younger people to come into the area and stay here? And, you know, and start their families and things along those lines. What industries are going to be there? It's part of a major issue. We're looking at it at the Hampton Roads writ-large level, you know, on a variety of committees that I serve on. And the brain drain is a big, big concern for everybody. All the college kids come in, they have a great time, and they go out to the Four Winds. And that, we're seeing that at Norfolk State, we're seeing it at ODU, Christopher Newport, Hampton University, and Virginia Westman. They're all going hither and yon. And so that's an issue that's going to have to be addressed as we go forward. On the retail side of the house, Pecosin tracks very, very closely with national and Hampton Roads averages. And as you can see, how much is available for rent? 17.45 for Pecosin, and Hampton Roads is $18. And then, as you see, the vacancy rate's surprisingly, you know, amazingly low, 3.7% vacancy, which is fantastic. I can tell you, MacArthur Mall, I'm a downtown Norfolk kind of guy. My wife and I have a condominium down there. But I can tell you, MacArthur Center, or MacArthur Mall, however you want to call it, it's not pretty. And there's a lot of boarded-up storefronts, and there are a lot of storefronts that have stuff that isn't revenue generating. And so retail, I, we, we're going to see some serious contraction in retail as we go forward. The city of Norfolk is already looking at redesigning MacArthur Mall and putting the roads that they blocked off and putting them back in, as one of the, one of the recommendations as they go forward. You know, available square footage, there's 8 million square feet in Hampton Roads that is available right now, but in Pecosin, you only have 58,400. So that speaks very nicely that you're keeping your stores occupied, or your storefronts The trends, once again, we're calling this into question just because of the caveats I mentioned up front. Our growth for the region has always been less. Hampton Roads, for some reason, is a lagging indicator. When we're taking a look at the United States economic trends, and we're looking at the state's economic trends, Hampton Roads seems to be a lagger. It takes us longer to get out of it. When we had the last recession, it took us 10 years to get out, whereas the federal side and the state side, they were done in five and seven years, but it took Hampton Roads 10 years. I really don't have an answer to that, but it's something to keep in mind as, as you go forward. So, let's talk about the pandemic. Now, I have to say one thing, and I cannot emphasize this point enough. If it wasn't for the support of Dave and Charity in getting the word out, we would not have the results that we see here on the screen today. In literally a year and some change, $3.5 billion in federal relief was brought into this region. And it was a team effort. Okay, you know, Charity and Dave said, "Man, you're just burying us with emails." But they said, "But it's all good, so keep those cards and letters coming in." But the fact of the matter is, it was a team effort. You know, the SBA Congress allocated the money, the SBA developed programs literally out of thin air. Paycheck Protection Program did not exist before COVID. The Economic Injury Disaster Loan existed back in the good old days when, oh, we had flooding in Pecosin, let's get the federal government to come in with some EIDL loans. Well, that's great if, if the damage is restricted to one small geographic area, but it was the entire nation, and we crashed the system. The system was down for two weeks because of the sheer weight of the bureaucracy just crashing all the computers. It was ugly. And its economic development departments, its chambers of commerce, it's the financial institutions. I mean, you take a look, 41,000 loans were processed by financial institutions in Hampton Roads. That speaks volumes. I know Poolpoint National Bank was working 24 hours a day, three shifts, eight hours a day, eight hours on a shift, just processing loan applications. I mean, it was a Herculean effort, and it paid tremendous dividends because it did help a lot of, a lot of businesses survive the horrible times of 2020. Now, the bad news is, is that the federal government has kind of fired their last bullet. And it's a shame, because inflation is now rearing its ugly head. Businesses are starting to fail again. We are now going into the Darwinian level of existence, of survival of the fittest. And for SBDC counselors and us sitting there and talking to our clients, we have to make sure that they sharpen their pencils as sharply as possible, and they literally slash every cost that does not contribute. And sometimes it's hard to convince people that you really don't need that, save the money because you have cash flow problems. Here are the things that, pardon me, small business owners have been talking about. The virus mutations. Okay, we had Delta. Well, first we had COVID, then we had the Delta variant, pardon me, then we had Omicron. And for those who don't, who are anagram fiends, Omicron is also the anagram for moronic. And in some cases, at certain levels of government, we really did some stupid things. Inflation, 7%. But salaries gone up 5%. Yeah, well, great, we're only 2% behind inflation. So that works very, very well. The continuing supply chain and workforce issues. In 2020, excuse me, in 2020, I was talking about the fact that the governor had signed a bill stating that the minimum wage was going to go to $15 an hour by 2025. And what kind of an impact was that going to have on small business? Well, ladies and gentlemen, $15 an hour is in our rearview mirror. When I go up to Pecosin, to, excuse me, when I go up to Gloucester to see clients, there is a Chick-fil-A on Route 17, just as you make that turn to go into Gloucester Courthouse. Now hiring, $17 an hour to start. Now, if Chick-fil-A is paying $17 an hour, okay, and this is an industry where the profit margins are between 3% and 4%. So 97, 96 to 97 cents of every dollar that came in is already spent on overhead, raw materials, and labor. And the labor was based on $9.50 an hour. Now it's 17 an hour? How are businesses going to survive with that? It is really, really challenging for small business owners. And that, that really gets into the next part, and that is mental health issues. We're working very closely with the Brock Institute over at EVMS, Dr. Cynthia Romero. And, you know, Dr. Romero's a fantastic woman, but she was approaching it from a medical perspective, and I said, "No, you have to look at it from a business perspective." And I drew on a blackboard a little stick-figure man, and, and then I put a giant pyramid on top of him with the point sticking right in his head. And I said, "This is what small business owners are going through. If you take a look at that pyramid, where it's narrow at the point, that's him and his family, and all of the issues that they had to deal with. And then you make it a little bit larger, that's their employees and their families, and making sure that they're taken care of. Will they even come back?" You know, all sorts of issues. And then when it's at its widest, that's all the customers. When the government shut down all small businesses, with the exception of those viewed to be critical key industries, which, what the rationale was for that, I have no idea, all their shop, all their customers went away. And they went online, and they found other places to go, and they were closed for a year. So now, small business owners had to go back in, and they had to convince customers to come home. Come on back to the store, you know, we got, we're safe, we're sanitary, we're everything along the lines, and it's been tough. It's been very, very hard for small business owners. The biggest issue, our confidence has been shaken to the core. And I really cannot emphasize that point enough. We have to restore confidence in our government, we have to restore confidence in our systems, we have to restore confidence in ourselves. When downtown Franklin got flooded, it was devastating. But it was physical. You could see the damage. And it's real simple. All you had to do was knock out the walls, down the studs, dry them out, put new drywall up, throw some paint on, hey, we're back in business again. A linear problem. In, in the Navy, we called that a tame problem. Yeah, it was somewhat complex, but it was a tame one, because you started here, you had a clear end state in mind, and you knew how to get there. Well, ladies and gentlemen, COVID is a wicked problem, because if you do one thing, it's going to have an impact somewhere else. And you really don't know what it is until you do it, and then you take a look, and you have to react again. And there's no clear end state in mind. What is it, what exactly is going to be the restoration of confidence? Is it going to be like the Supreme Court justices, when asked to define pornography, he said, "I don't, I can't define it, but I know it when I see it?" You know, is restoration of confidence going to be, "I know it when I see it?" Or how's this all going to come together? We really don't have an answer at this point in time. Then we get into the home-based business. In Pecosin, 62% of your business licenses are written to home addresses. That is a staggering number, and it's higher in even other counties. We're in the process right now of working with Melissa Davidson, who used to be the number two at York County Economic Development. Melissa did a fantastic study on home-based businesses, because she found out that in York County, it was 68%. And this is the underserved, the forgotten economy. Now, maybe in tax rolls, they're somewhat small, but still, 68% of your business is there. So she put together a fantastic program, she actually got a gold medal from the International Economic Development Council for her research into this. And she started a fantastic program, and we're hoping, through a grant request that we're putting in to Truist Foundation right now, to get about $100,000 to institute, reinstitute this program, not only here on the peninsula, but on the south side and throughout the rest of Hampton Roads as well. This is, this is going to be important, because it's, it's not monolithic. It's not a retail clothing store where, well, I sell women's clothes, I sell men's clothes, I sell kids' clothes. You have defense contractors, you have early education childcare, you have beauticians, you have lawn care and landscaping, you have everything under the sun, and they're all different, but their needs have to be addressed as we go forward. And subject, any questions from the Commission? That concludes my presentation.
Jim, I do have a question, and it's probably one you can't answer, because I've been, I've been running it through my mind for several, several months, I guess. You know, given, given the, you know, ending of the government subsidies, you've mentioned $60 to fill up your car, other, other inflation measurements, Chick-fil-A paying $17 an hour, why is there a labor shortage?
The Wall Street Journal did a good study on that, and they found out that 47 million people have decided to leave the labor force, for whatever reasons. 47 million nationally left the labor force. And it was for a variety of reasons. Some of them, you know, they just, you know, they were of retirement age, and they said, "You know what? Let's go fishing." Others had family members that came down with COVID that need long-term care. And, you know, my wife, for instance, her brother came down with COVID. He was unmarried, living up in Pennsylvania. We didn't know about it for two months, until we had the police go out to his apartment and do a health and welfare check, and we found out that he was in Hershey Medical Center. And so my wife, she, there are three kids, it's her older, her oldest brother, there's another one, brother who lives in Colorado, and then my wife who lives down here. Well, Colorado can't come to Pennsylvania, so Barb drove six hours up and moved him down here. And he's now in an assisted living facility down in Virginia Beach. So that took her out of the marketplace because she had to care for her brother. There's a lot of sandwich generation, where you see baby boomers who are taking care of older parents as well as taking care of their kids. There are young professional couples whose kids had to be homeschooled or had to stay at home and remote learn. Mom and dad can't go to work. I mean, it's, at one point, we all thought, yeah, they're just lying back, eating bonbons and enjoying that great big unemployment check that they were getting, especially with the federal government push. But there are a lot of issues associated with that, that just, it's gotten people out of it. Once again, they're out of practice. We got to get them back into practice. I hope that answers your question.
That does, yeah. There's no real answer, it's just sort of a, you know, interesting dynamic, I guess. I think a lot of folks that retired because they wanted to retire are probably going to unretire because they have to unretire.
That's right.
That's a, that's a very true point. I'm, I'm retiring on the 1st of June, I turned 70. And I tell everybody, I'm stepping down, but I'm not stepping away. I still want to, I still want to have some fun. I still want to, I still want to have some fun, professional fun. Mrs. Carroll, on the other hand, says it's time for her to have some fun, so I guess, I guess I know where I'm going.
So, Mr. Carroll, the, the impetus that, uh, really got me thinking that it would be really beneficial to have, uh, some information like this for our fingertips. Um, several months ago, within, I want to say it was within a month, there were a couple of daily press articles and dealing with mixed-use development. And the first one was a very dire outlook on mixed-use development and how it was essentially dead and dying. And then just a few weeks later, there was this boys', you know, uh, celebration of all these mixed-use developments that are opening up around the area. Dave's nodding his head, do you, do you remember these articles? Yes. And so I, uh, wanted to get a feel, especially for mixed-use development, because I know ten years ago, that was, uh, that was something up and coming and exciting. And, um, you know, just the trends for something like that, after hearing the, or after reading the back-to-back articles that were dire outlooks and then very positive outlooks. So I, I wanted to get your opinion about that, please.
under the Dillon Rule, the localities are very, very restricted in what they can do as far as generating tax revenues. And it's a matter of going up to, up to Richmond and saying, mother, may I? And then, you know, you propose and God disposes. And so if you lose commercial real estate taxes, and you lose the opportunity to get profits, and you lose the opportunity to have these businesses, these properties, excuse me, generate more money for the localities, you know, what, how do you, how do you solve that hole in your budget? Uh, residential is a lot different than commercial. Uh, you may have some sales taxes that you can rely upon, but, you know, it's, you want to maximize the return on your investment for the properties that you do have. If you're talking about, for instance, Town Center in Virginia Beach, you know, DeVries has just gone nuts down there, and he has retail on the ground floor, and then he built vertically, and, you know, he has residential all over the place. And so what he did was, he basically created a community in a very, very restricted geographic area so that they could maximize both residential by going high and retail and commercial by opening up the, the streets there. Uh, if it's just a onesie-twosie kind of a situation, okay, my opinion, I would, I would say, unless they can prove a very, very valid case on how this is going to benefit the city from a financial standpoint, um, I'm not in favor of it.
And in favor of mixed use?
Uh, if it's just a small one that's going to have very little return, it may even have a negative return based on what you could have gotten from a, just a straight commercial, uh, situation, I would look at it from that perspective. Because you, you have, you've got a budget, and you have to find the funds to keep that budget going. And that's, that's my challenge.
Well, I think the challenge is with retail in general, you meet new ways of shopping, we're seeing so many empty retail stores, just like over in City Center, uh, you know, you speak several boutique clothing stores and things of that, and everything's gone. I mean, unless it's a restaurant, it seems that's the only thing that's holding its own over there. And even then, like, the large ones, you know, have gone away. And so, um, I've seen some mixed use that was intended to be mixed use that ultimately they didn't build retail under apartments, and they just made them apartments from ground floor up. Uh, but I've seen a couple of, of projects where there were just a half a dozen, uh, mixed-use retail uh, along with the mixed use. And we're seeing a lot of rental and, and home ownership projects. How do you feel about those combined?
I wish I could give you an answer, ma'am, I'm sorry. Uh, I just don't have, have any experience in that area.
Okay.
So.
Thank you so much for everyone, and, um, it is, uh, I'm just very happy. Uh, all, any knowledge that we can have to help inform our recommendations, I think is, uh, just essential for, uh, for us going forward, so thank you so much for having me.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you very much for having me here tonight, number one. And more importantly, thank you for the support that, uh, the commission gives to economic development and to the local small business community. It's essential, so thank you.
Happy birthday.
Not quite yet.
All right.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is an audience for visitors. And as I see none, I will close, uh, the audience for visitors and move on to the public hearings, of which we have one, uh, which is the amendment to the city code pertaining to Chapter Six, Article Three, the signs in the public right of way. We had a work session on this prior to this meeting, but, uh, Wally, if you would like to recap that.
Uh, not a whole lot to say, uh, um, but except that, uh, in our work session, we did come up with one important addition to, uh, uh, monument-style signs. Uh, and Thomas, did you got that exactly? Oh, I may have it, okay, sorry. Want to read this out verbatim. Let me see here. Oh, there it is, right, right in front of me. Okay, um, under, uh, Section Six dash one-one-four, where we talked about subdivided notification signs under B, under number one, we say there shall be monument-style signs defined as freestanding signs supported primarily by an internal structural framework or integrated into landscaping or other solid structural features other than support poles. We wanted to add the sentence, uh, the monument shall be constructed with materials of a permanent nature being, um, masonry, stone, and similar appearing materials. And that was, uh, that came out of our work session, essentially.
I had to make a motion to accept as recommended to add that provision to, I think we said we were going to add it to B one, is that correct?
Uh, B one, yes. We're just having you say it, essentially.
For a second.
A second.
All right.
Dever?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribel?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now, that's going to then go back to city council.
Uh, March.
March.
Probably second hearing.
Next item is communications and correspondence. Wally, do you have?
Well, just a few things, briefly. Uh, number one is the, uh, amendment to, uh, for Bob Moses that we talked about last month, uh, went through the city council and was approved. I guess we did it two months ago. Um, uh, Mr. Dever has submitted his resignation, uh, so we'll have another vacancy. And, uh, we'll hope that, uh, that the council can get somebody appointed for both their vacancies as soon as possible. Uh, and this is Erin Mixon's last meeting with us. Erin, you want to apologize, or, or, or shall perjoy?
Um, I'm just going to move on, and it's with a heavy heart. I do love the city very much. Appreciate being given the opportunity.
Anything else, Wally?
I think I told it that right now. Oh, oh, no, 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 one, one important addition, I almost forgot. Erin's replacement is coming on board, uh, March the fourteenth.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, we were, we were very fortunate, I think, to get a replacement in such a timely manner.
Pretty quickly, yeah.
So, uh, we're counting our blessings on that. So you'll get to meet her at the next meeting.
And is council going to vote on, um, both vacancies, um, in their upcoming meeting, or?
I don't know, they're aware of the one, and they just became aware of the second. Uh, I'm not sure, but I will talk with the city manager about it and make sure that that's, uh, that information is given to the council and hopefully act quickly on it, because, uh, obviously we need.
Nothing, um, I, I just think, you know, we highlighted a little bit at the end of last year that, um, you know, we're really going to focus, uh, this year, and, uh, I can't believe we're already through February, but truthfully, uh, this year and probably end of next, next year, um, on continuing to bring you all code changes. Um, I think you can count on those, uh, in the near and distant future.
Uh, update on the old citizens' bank?
We know that the property's been purchased.